Ready? Is there a pledge of allegiance, Ray? Will you lead us?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray.
Very well.
How are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Gary wouldn't let me look at you ahead of time. That was all on Gary.
Sorry.
The only reason why is because he was trying to get out of the birthday party called.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe Matthew had to make the appointment.
Matthew is dealing with the situation at the back to school night. Dave is in his office, probably.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Or did he? He wanted him to go grab it.
Yeah.
I'm shocked you're far.
Yeah, grab it.
Now you're grabbing it.
He's got a couple things.
Oh, he was probably, he's probably working. He's probably waiting for us to grab it.
Yeah.
We're closing here.
Okay. This is so weird. We're like...
I know. We're not very close.
I know. We are, yeah, exactly. We are returning to closed session. That takes us somewhere on the agenda. To item four and to item five, adoption and approval of the agenda. 5.1, approval of the agenda for August 21st through the 18th.
So move back then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, approval of the minutes. And I believe we have to pull 6.1 and 6.2.
Yes.
Because we don't have a quorum of people. Because you missed 6.2 and I missed 6.1.
Well?
You were not one way and I wasn't the other. So we'll have to bring those back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Item seven, special recognition, support and presentation. 7.1, summer project update and recognition. Chris Thomas, CDO. Can you get away, Chris?
So we have had an extremely busy summer. And I hope that people have noticed our campuses are looking pretty, I believe, amazing. I've invited Ray and John Wong to be here, a director of maintenance and operations. Jordan Lane, who's our assistant director, will be here, but he's been pretty ill the last couple days. So anyway, we did not want him to come if he wasn't feeling well. So we've got some pictures from the summer. And while we go through the PowerPoint and look at the pictures, I'm also just going to describe a few of the highlights from each of our schools. So at Peddle Mah High School, do we know when we start actually?
The first one I have is Grant, but we can...
No, Grant. So at Grant Elementary, spent a lot of quality time there this summer, as you know. We had that rubberized surface that was installed, I don't know, five, six years ago. I'm not sure what which. So we came in, we moved all of the asphalt. One of the containers that we did it before repaved the entire blacktop, rebuilt all the wall walls. And then we came in and restrited and actually added three elements that the teachers all rented. One of them is twister.
Twister, yes.
So if one out was trinito.
That was a visual that I don't need to...
You just need a spinner.
You just need a spinner.
Right. So the staff are thrilled, the teachers are thrilled. I mean, it's just, it's really a great, it's a good... Yeah, so Grant, we also did brand new pocket tables in the cafeteria. And the staff are thrilled about that. Those were safety hazards. New slurry seal, new fencing to create a safer campus over adjacent by the YMCA. We refenced that whole thing. And we're actually working on doing a pad to move the dumpster away from the play structure as well. So a lot going on at Grant. We're pretty excited about that.
Is the track going to be done something as well or is that...
We're going to work that problem.
Yeah.
And come up with a solution. Very different because the rubber surface was on pavement, the track is on dirt, so it's a different solution.
Sure.
Okay, next school. Peddle Mah High School. So this is a picture of the pool project. We did a lot at Peddle Mah High, as you know. The pool's been under construction for several months. It's expected to be completed in September. But we also did roofing and repairs on building H, which is the science building. We finished the second phase of the deck waterproofing. Ray and his staff came in and we redid the HVAC at the museum, waterline repairs, new walk-up flooring in the main corridor where the tile was failing, new freezer refrigeration for the kitchens, and we reconnected the gym floors. So Peddle Mah High is looking pretty amazing. You can see the new roof in this picture. See how it's all white? It was pretty discolored before. And we're hoping to try to find some way to put Peddle Mah High School PHS on those three sections of the roof. We haven't, we found a product that will work, but we haven't found a painter who will do it.
Yeah.
So we're still working on that.
How about the sidewalks? Was that...
Oh, yes, and we did the sidewalk.
With that bus or with the city?
With us. No, with us.
Oh, my gosh.
We worked with the contractor who the city has a contract with. And so we got a really, who's this contractor?
Carter Crilly.
Carter Crilly is a contractor who has a contract with the city to do their sidewalks. So the city approved the design, but we paid for it. We actually designed in some planting areas and all sleeves between all those areas so that we can eventually get water. And actually, we're hoping to plant vines, light vines that won't take the fence down, but will add some greenery on the fence. So a huge shout out to again Ray and his team in advance because they're going to be doing the irrigation work. And to Bob Spergen, who...
I was going to say Bob Spergen.
Who helped with the design. He actually helped work with us on what those sidewalks might look like, and the city too. So it was a great...
He's been working on that project for about 20 years.
I know. It took us two years to do. And we got a great price on it because the contract, they help with the city is really cost effective a course ago. So we learned that when we did the sidewalks over the track. Valley Vista. So this is actually turf, synthetic turf, new play structure on the field. This picture really doesn't do it justice because Ray's crew came in and they actually laid sod all around the actual real turf so that it blends in. So if you go out there now, it just looks like a green backdrop for the whole thing. So this is all flush with the pavement, fairly flush with the grass area, but we're trying out this new product. The corn plays, kids pick at and gouge. But having turf like this over a product that's soft to create the falls zone, I think is a great idea. So we're going to try this product and then maybe use it in other play structures in the future. So Valley Vista looks great. And since it sat right on the field, it made a lot of sense. So Valley Vista, I will also tell you, we did a few other things. Oh, we also redid the window blazing again. Because last time we did the window blazing, it was the middle of December, lots of rain, and it didn't cure very well. So it's looking pretty good now. Paint on it again, Ray's crew came out and painted it up and had it glaze. Can we lift this picture? Okay, this is the Ole Garden at Casa Grande. So at Casa Grande, we've also done a lot. Ray's crew again came in and did a lot of work using tractors and weed whackers to really knock down all of the weeds at the Ole Garden and kind of create a nice foundation for us to open the school with. We're going to continue working with the school site to maybe do a little bit more hardscape that doesn't grow weeds in the future, so it's a little easier to manage. A lot of the work that's put in is pretty amazing, but it is soft scape and so weeds can easily grow and weed club only works so long. So we're thinking about doing some of the pads and the seating areas in a concrete, more natural looking concrete color to make it more manageable. But that's a light garden. So if you hadn't seen it before, this is pretty amazing. So Casa, we also did re-roofing and repairs on building E. That's the main building with the auto shop. And we, you can see some of the roofing work there. We have some pictures of some of the trucks. We also did a renovation of the sand field again, that was our grounds crew. We installed a hood ventilation for the curtech ed classroom, waterline repairs of the baseball field, and then also reconnected the gym floors. These are just the highlights. These aren't all the other projects. Okay, portables. These, I believe, are the portables at San Antonio that we had brought in for, in order to relocate Crossroads. So at Crossroads, we relocated it to the San Antonio campus. Two leased portables. A lot of infrastructure work went into that. Again, Ray's crew came in and they built walls once the portables were sat down so that there was a principal office, small instructional spaces for counseling services, et cetera, a place for the secretary, and then of course the instructional space. And also Ray's crews are working on restoring the field and actually raising it to create better drainage. So we're hoping that field's going to be better than at the bottom of the field. So a lot of work at San Antonio Crossroads. And we put in some new fencing and ADA accessible pads to these as well. I don't know if you're familiar with the teen center. Used to be the daycare, so how those rubber squares up. So we're working with John Talent to kind of turn that into better spaces for students.
There's no longer a daycare?
No, they closed it about when I first got here.
There's a...
Because they didn't, they, I don't, we didn't have any.
So it's a good thing.
Yep.
That is a good thing.
So this is at McKinley where we moved the two adult ed portables from where they were in the center of the campus to over by the preschool. I have it on video, actually. They take a forklift and that's how they move these units. This is a highly unusual portable. It comes in three sections. It's a 30 by 32. A standard one is a 24 by 40. So both of those have been sat down in place. New carpet has been installed. Again, Ray's guys are out there replacing ceiling tile on the lenses and the light fixtures to really clean it. And Nancy and Emily and her crew are actually kind of going in and painting and ditching out some stuff. And then new ramps. And a lot of work went into getting these portables in place in a very short amount of time. And I will tell you, part of why we moved them is because we need to free up space where they were. We're immediately going to go into design for adding three or four more portables because McKinley's growing and they need the space. We added three FTE. So I know Lonnie Larson is like, he sees I need at least two more classrooms. Boys and Girls Club is also going to share these. Basement at Pengrove.
Wow.
So if you haven't seen the basement at Pengrove, I think that's what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I took that picture.
That is the basement at Pengrove. So at the far end is a new wall that we had built. And our guys are doing a lot of work on the interior to add tactile wall space, to do texture on the walls, painting, reframing the windows. And we're really trying to, you can't see the line, but these are pre-high ceilings. So it's actually really, really light.
It's a great space.
It's a great space.
And what do they use it for?
Nothing.
So far, they've used it for storage throughout the years. And the principal there has really wanted to do something with it.
It had water intrusion issues because on the one side is dirt. So it's kind of on hillside. So this is the lower section and the higher section, so appear dirt on the sides, a lot of water coming through, water coming through the windows. So we've done waterproofing on the building to make it watertight. And now we're just improving or replacing all the finishes so that we can actually restore it. Ideally, we'd like to relocate the YMCA into the space. On the other side of the wall would be the YMCA space. It's about 1,800 square feet. This is the larger space. So it's got a huge volume. It's a huge space that would be great for kids. So we're working on for covering and some other fine finishing touches. The last thing we'll do is make the ADA accessible because there's like three steps down. So we'll have to figure out a way to ramp ADA access to the space. Pengrove, this has done huge work in progress and is continuing. And at Pengrove, we've also done some other projects like interior painting. We've investigated two interior restrooms. They're small restrooms that they closed for many years, poured concrete in the drain where the toilet goes. So Ray, again, his crew came out, we hired, I think, Roy Sewer to camera the sewer line. Sewer line was shot. So we're going to have to come up with a solution to never store those restrooms. That way the TK classroom actually has restrooms on its side. Okay. And this is McKinley. This is actually a pad, the gravel on one side, bark on the other. So the gravel is, we relocated a container from Grant that they no longer needed. We're restoring the floor, putting it at McKinley where the adult ed and Boys and Girls Club need storage. And then all of this bark, we ordered four new picnic tables for packs. So they actually could have four square picnic tables. So on the bark, they can actually have their lunch. Got rid of the old picnic tables, so that is McKinley. And this is also McKinley. So we converted the Boys and Girls Club portable, which is at the front of the school, into a classroom because we added three FTE. And when we got in there, what the new teacher who we just hired realized is that there's no storage, no cabinetry, nothing. It was just a big room. So Ray's guys went down to, Ray and his crew went down to Home Depot or one of them, got these cabinets, got some of the countertops and installed it themselves. So now the teacher has countertop and space. And I think the sidewalks are to seal the adhesive when they put it down. So we removed those ones. And this is also at McKinley. We spent a lot of quality time at McKinley. So this was an old sink. So remember, we did exterior paint at McKinley this summer? That gray trim was new. It used to be all brown. We removed an old sink. It was like an old trough sink. And so we installed a brand new stainless steel sink that they will then use for their garden because we're relocating their garden to that big grassy area outside of the multi. We have plans that parents have helped draw up and are actually getting quotes to grade the area, put in some concrete paths so that they can then build their planter boxes between the concrete path and the ADA accessible. And this sink will become an integral part to that garden. So the garden's going to be kind of a focal point. It will be, we're hoping to make it kind of a safety guard garden. So they're pretty excited about that. And this is one of the first stuff.
Next.
One tired guy.
So I will say there's a, two quotes, and I hope I'm not embarrassing anybody, but Ray came to me, Jordan Lane is our new assistant director, and they have literally worked so hard this summer that Jordan came to Ray one evening at the end of the day and said, "What, I am pooed." That was a quote. So they've really worked hard all summer long. And I just wanted to really acknowledge Ray and Jordan and the grounds team and the maintenance team for how hard they worked. The schools look pretty amazing. And I think it's a testament to the leadership in the department and to all of the guys and how committed and dedicated they are to really student, our students' success and having our kids and our staff feel good about coming back to a great environment. And I could go on and on. I've got pages of stuff that they've done. This kind of gives you a feel for it. Every school site has really had quite a bit, so.
Thank you very much, Ray. Yes.
Pretty exciting.
What about McDowell or those projects? Why not?
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's more on every campus.
What's going on right now at McDowell? Something in the center?
We are doing an oasis garden.
Oh, right.
So the, what Maury Anderson calls the cactus, has gone in. It's really more of a saguaro, it's a drinking fountain, which is a great drinking fountain with high-low and a hydration system. So it looks like a saguaro.
A cactus?
Yeah, it looks like a cactus. So it's the first part of the oasis garden that's...
Could you demonstrate that?
She did it quite well. Thank you.
I'll take a picture.
So we had six trees that were just delivered today. So if you picture the center of McDowell where the two portables used to sit, it's now a big barren blacktop. So we are converting that into a small seating, leading, small instructional space area that they're calling the Oasis Garden. We've worked with the teachers and the staff there to come up with the design. It's going to have a pathway that goes through it, some seating areas, some planting areas. And we're adding six trees to that big blacktop area to create some shade, to warm it up, and to really have a long-term plan to make that a space that kids feel good about and that can hang out in. So that's all going to be happening this fall. But the six trees just arrived today. They're going to hopefully be more. And stay tuned on that one. So that's happening.
Yeah.
And we're also looking at pocket tables at every school. All of our pocket tables are really old and the cafeterias are damaging the floors. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but we think we've accomplished a lot this summer.
Sounds like a lot.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Okay. Before I move on to item eight, I was literally missed. We should have introduced Michelle so people understand why she's sitting next to you. So we're sad to say that Sue has decided to bail on, is retiring, which is going to make us very sad. But we're so happy that such a wonderful person is going to take her spot. So excited to have you here, Jamie.
Welcome.
Thank you. Item eight, comments from the public scene. They will move on as fast as you can imagine. Item nine, report on activities and correspondence of school members. I failed to ask you to. So if there's anything you'd like to add now, we've got a football game, football camp for Peddle Mah High. What else can we do? There's like a lot going on.
Trusty Lynch and I went out.
Oh, you went out the first day of school with Frank?
The first day of school.
We're hot down.
Tried to do as many places as we could.
And how was it?
It was great.
Yeah, it was my very first time. Missing some first days of school. Full call. All right, moving on. Item 10, approval of consent agenda by conservative motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Five beloved action items. Item 11.1, administration human resources. 11.1.1, amended classified management salary schedule. Got a motion?
So moved. Second?
Questions, comments? Self-explanatory?
Is it just...
We have an open position and we're trying to, we're trying desperately to fill it. So it just, the positions themselves really are, the supervisor of the database management needs to match the network engineer because responsibilities are really the same.
They're realigned as...
It's not a significant difference, but it's getting them on par at the same level. We think we'll have a better chance of finding somebody.
All right, good stuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.1.2, amended classified management auxiliary salary schedule. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Questions, comments?
Same.
Same issue. It's just the same position, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
11.1.3, resolution 1819-04, the Board of Education, Peddle Mah City Elementary, Joint Union High School Districts, reducing a vacant secretary. So any consortium position effective August 21st, 2018.
So moved.
Melanie, you want a second thought?
Second. I'm sorry.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. 11.1.4, resolution 1819-05, the Board of Education, Peddle Mah City Elementary, Joint Union High School Districts, presumption to the separation from service requirement pursuant to education code section 24214.5 or 26812 for a school board psychologist for Annette Dessel.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, wake up. Any questions?
Is that...
It seems self-explanatory.
Hard to fill positions.
Again.
We still have to get approval from Sturrs on that. She's retired, so we're asking not to waive the six month...
Yeah, so they have to wait six months before you can start working in school schedule. So this is asking for waiver at that requirement. It's stupid.
Typically, for her type of position, they would waive that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.1.5, district intern credential request from Paul Christie to teach special education classes, therapeutic support program meeting for the South County Consortium for the 2018-2019 school year.
So moved.
Second?
There you go. Any questions?
Same thing. All these positions are hard to fill.
Yes.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.1.6, provisional internship permit request for Arla Chavez to teach special education classes, RSP at Kalamore Junior High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
So moved.
Second?
So she's an intern. Does she have her special ed credential?
No, she'll get it at the same time.
Okay.
She'll work on it this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.2, business services. 11.2.1, purchase orders.
So moved.
Second?
Any issues with the purchase orders? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.2.2, ratification of warrant registered for warrants issued July 1st, 2018, July 31st, 2018 by Peddle Mah City Schools.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are down to discuss discussion information only. Item 12.1, administration human resources. 12.1.1, Williams settlement, fourth quarter report for 2017-2018, visit and review of McKinley School. Luckily, it's as usual.
All good?
All good. Sorry, I got a little screen blip there. 12.2, business services. 12.2.1, transportation update athletics.
So just because we said we would bring it back to talk about it and give you an update. What we have tried to do for athletics and transportation going into the fall is to start piloting a model to see if we can even do it on a small scale. And for the fall, the three activities that we focused in on are football, volleyball, and cheer.
Team sports.
Into the team sports. And we'll be looking at team sports throughout the school year and looking at trying to minimize the amount of driver time that students are doing driving back and forth. And so when we looked at the legal requirements related to that and got recommendations from our legal counsel about what we could do and what we couldn't do, we put together, we worked with the athletic directors and transportation and business and the principals and APs to set in place a motion of events. We're subsidizing some of that. We don't necessarily know how much at this particular point in time. We're able to keep the fees down for students to really a reasonable rate right now. It's a little bit different from school to school because football's been fundraising for transportation. So at Peddle Mah High, they don't really fall into this category. The Casa Grande wasn't specifically fundraising for that. But what it works out to be is for Casa Grande, football and cheer, we can do that for about $30 with our subsidizing. Students can do $30 a student. I would cover the expenses plus our subsidizing of it. Volleyball's a little more expensive because there's a lot more matches at $60 a season.
And far fewer.
Cross country is $30.
And are there waivers for families?
Yes, there's waivers. There's three things that you have to be able to provide. You have to be able to waive. You have to give, students have to have the ability to not have to. You can't require a student to take the bus.
Okay.
And we have a provision that allows for students, if they take the bus up and they want to go home with their parents, to do that. And so we're gonna try it out, that's maxing us right now with transportation because we have issues related to just finding bus drivers. So we're seeing if this is even doable. We've run into some kinks related to this, honestly, most of them have been related to that this is, it's very, very difficult for the schools to restart a practice that went away a long time ago. And that's what we found out, that by just simply saying, yeah, let's do this, created quite a bit of havoc at the school sites.
We found out it's way more complicated.
It's way, it's.
When you dive into it, then it appears to be.
Then our original discussion.
A certain surface, yes, it's complicated.
Didn't necessarily, didn't necessarily get the information that we needed on our end to, as you remember from the special board meeting, we were gonna do a lot of that work, groundwork for people, but it was contingent on getting information. Didn't necessarily get that in a timely manner, we're working on those kinks, but we're feeling fairly confident that Marsh has got a schedule in place for those three events.
So not cross-country?
Cross-country, yes.
Oh, so four.
Cross, yes, so cross-country, cheer, football.
Football.
And volleyball.
And volleyball.
Well, cheer is kind of with football.
Cheers with football.
It kind of.
Does cheerleaders go on the bus with the football?
Cheerleaders do go on the bus with football players, but again, there's been a different practice based on schools, so we're trying to, we're trying to get them to be the same practice, and so.
Who's on, who's on the bus with the kids? The coaches? So, so.
Not all of them, but some of the coaches, usually you put a couple on them.
And the bus drivers know how to have, like, what they would do is like all the cheer leaders sit up front and the football players sit in the back.
Because that can become an issue.
Right, no. I mean, but it's been done pretty effectively in many places.
It's really, actually, it's the only way to do it that makes it cost-effective. It's, it's a significant expense, but.
And do the coaches are aware of these?
Mm-hmm.
That transportation's provided?
Yeah, oh yeah, well, I can only tell you what, what the multiple meetings we've had with the AEs and with the.
You know, it was not a coaches meeting at Petaluma High, and this was not one.
So, I mean, all of this came, all this was, all this was finalized in this last.
But I can tell you, we, we know it's trickling down with the coaches because transportation's been hearing directly from coaches, including at Petaluma High School.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 this name.
No, it's trickling down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, wouldn't it?
I'm sure the coaches will be very relieved. And if kids opt out from taking the bus, that concerns me because if they're, if they're driving themselves or driving friends when they're not supposed, so what can, what, are we doing anything about that?
We don't have the ability, the recommendation from council is that you cannot require them to do that. They would, they're still following the same protocols that they would have in.
So do we get, do parents sign something that they know their kids are doing the driving or?
We get information back that says, that says either I am going, I'm utilizing this service or I'm going a different route.
And that's signed by parents?
I can tell you what I got last week.
But you didn't, if it was last week, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have received it. Anything, all of this, all of this literally was finalized on Thursday.
Oh.
So.
Because my, the email just said JB will be on the bus, and they need to be here three fifteen.
Again, I think it's a, it's a work in progress, because it's, it's very, I mean, literally, the final meeting we had was Thursday and we had transportation happening Friday afternoon. So there's, there's clearly gonna continue to be some growing pains as we, as we kind of work through the process.
I can tell you that, I mean, as a former coach, if a coach sends out something and says, says, the team needs, everybody needs to be here by four, four o'clock to get on the bus. If someone wanted to get technical, do they need to be there? You know, we, no, they don't need to be there. But the coach is thinking, you need to be here so that I can get you on the bus so that we can all get to the game on time. So I think we'll work through, we're gonna have to figure out what are the kinks in that system.
There's nuances that the coaches brought up that say, everybody need here to prepare to go. Some will go on the bus and some will go, you know what I mean, but we want everybody to meet and show, so there's, I think there's nuances and I think we're gonna work some of that.
Well, and we're, we're reminding ourselves now is that we're dealing by and large, well, almost all with the exception of maybe two or three coaches out of a whole system, people that have never done this before. This is brand new, they've never had to be responsible for this in their coaching career because it didn't exist. And so we're putting, we're putting a piece in place, but everybody feels like it's in the best interest of the students. We'll monitor and see what the, what the final cost is associated with it, start small, let's get, you know, we're, we're, because we've, we've got a template down, now we can start on winter right away and start working through that. But again, it's a little bit different because we're not asking for, like, for example, football will not be going back with a dollar figure because they already fundraised for that, but Casa would. So, and they've identified people at staff on site that'll be helping with collections. And business has a process for that, so we'll see what the issues are related to it. Our biggest issue is we won't be able to even explore expanding unless we deal with the issue related to drivers. The driver, the drivers.
The drivers.
So we, we'll have a plan, we have a plan for that, or at least some ideas, we'll bring those back to another meeting about that. Because that's bigger than just, that's bigger than just athletics, that's field trips. We've got a lot of teachers that are frustrated because field trips have a way of kind of falling all in the same month of the.
Same week. Well, and I can tell you, I mean, we've got districts like Sonoma Valley that are reaching out to us saying, hey, we need more buses, can you help us out? So everybody's struggling with transportation, bus drivers, it's, it's bigger than just Petaluma City Schools. But, so it's definitely capacity, a driving capacity issue.
Yeah, I thought we had a great conversation, Chris and I and Matthew, about some, trying some things that we have not tried in the past to recruit. So we'll, we'll be coming back with some of that.
Great, we're gonna move on.
How, actually, I have a question about vans, I know, I know, there was lots of discussion about.
So that, that would be, you know, we, right, there's kind of like the short term, mid term, long term. You know, so I think we're starting out with this, it'll take us longer to actually explore the option of vans or a white fleet, if you will. So that's not off the table, but we wanted to get started.
Yeah, no.
Well, it's part of this.
We're gonna learn lessons and see, it'll help, I think, inform what we may need from a white fleet perspective.
It's part of the trend analysis too, because we don't necessarily, if we send up two buses, we don't necessarily bring two buses back. We may be in situations where we, like, we know that when, if it's a big win, kids tend to go home on the bus together than when they lose. That's just, they, they do that, you know, they want to call, kind of want to hang together when it's a big thing. So we're gonna just collect the data, and the data may show on that that we don't need to bring two full buses up, maybe it's a bus and a half. Or maybe we don't need to bring two, two full buses back just to, you know, it's a bus and a half. So we're gonna let that data determine whether a white fleet really works or not, would be, would be the best way to go.
I think a nice email from the district at some level to the both the high schools, to parents, that coaches could forward on, that, you know, we're, a pilot program?
They got a letter, they've already received it.
Oh, okay.
Both AEs.
But, to the parents?
It's a letter intended for parents.
Aides forward, no.
But does it explain why we're asking for the class and?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I think that's right, I'm just, I think the information to the parents is super helpful because every parent I talked to is very concerned about their kids driving.
We drafted a whole letter for voting on this.
So that's awesome, thank you very much. I think the information's good.
I can, I can forward it to you, I have it right here.
No, because it's still at the AEs.
Oh, it's going.
That's what I was trying to say to you, I said the AEs have it, but they haven't sent it out yet.
Oh.
Twelve point two point two, amended board policy, first reading for board policy, three five five one, food service operations cafeteria fund. Questions? Um, we could do future business now, we will be returning to close session because we did not get done, but any future business caring?
Uh, no.
All right, we are going to adjourn to close session. And let me see, we will not have anything, oh, I guess I will have to report out, we have student dispossessions. So we're back?
Yep.